Good morning, everyone. Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning. Good morning.
Good morning.
We are calling this meeting to order. How's everybody doing today?
Good.
Good, good, good. It's another day's journey, and I'm so glad. All right, we're gonna stand right now for the Pledge of Allegiance, and then we're gonna go right into the Kids at Hope pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the five United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
As an adult and treasure hunter, I am committed to search for all the talent, skills, and intelligence that exist in all children and youth. I believe all children are capable of success, no exceptions. Thank you. Maybe seated. Okay, has anybody heard from Ms. Arison?
Her car's here.
Is her car here? Ms. Arison's car is here?
Why don't you drive?
Okay, maybe she's...
No, it's not hers, no.
Oh, okay, all right. So we're gonna move right along. We haven't heard from her today, but I'm sure she'll be coming in soon. So at this time, we're gonna go right into our strategic planning. Dr. Prince.
Good morning, Madam Chair. It's good to see all of our board members here. We're coming up on the month of March. I know a lot of our minds are, at least with my family, on spring break already, but we're still a few weeks away. But we've got a nice program today of some things that basically came up at our last board workshop. One was VPK, and Dr. Wild has a presentation. And we do have a guest, Deb Lavelle, the Director of Programs for the Early Learning Coalition. And then we're going to get into a construction update with Mr. O'Leary. And Dr. Summer, our Chief of Schools, is gonna be doing kind of a follow-up on the data that we provided with how do we monitor our progress? And he's gonna be providing that to you. And lastly, we're getting into open enrollment for kindergarten through eighth grade. And also, we will have some seats at Legacy that will be eligible for open enrollment, and Dr. Wild is going to be providing an update on that. Before we got started, though, I just wanted to give the board a couple of reminders. First of all, Thursday morning, February 27th, I'm going to be presenting at the Port St. Lucie City Council at 9:00 a.m. And if you are planning to attend that, I want to make sure that I recognize our board members. If any of them are going to be there, please let Ms. Lincoln know so that I can anticipate that, because we are providing the presentation today. And I just wanted to make sure that I was able to recognize board members. Friday is Project Citizen at 9:00 a.m. in the boardroom. And board members attending, I know Dr. Mills is judging, and Holly and Ingersoll. Friday, this is a month from now, but Lauren Sweet, our former council, she is, her investiture is a judge for the county court, is on that Friday, and I will be there. And of course, you did receive an invite from Ms. Lincoln, but please let her know if you're able to attend as we congratulate Lauren on her judgeship. So with that being said, I'm gonna go ahead and introduce Dr. Wild and turn it over to her. Dr. Wild?
Somebody clapping?
Good morning. Good morning. I'm very happy to be here, Madam Chair, Board Member Superintendent Prince. Excited to be presenting about such an important topic, and that is kindergarten readiness and early learning in St. Lucie County. Okay. We are gonna talk in this segment of today's meeting about early learning, the oversight of early learning countywide. We're also gonna talk about St. Lucie Public Schools and our own district VPK classrooms, and then also how we collaborate with local providers and work with them to try to give our young people the very, very best. We work very closely with the Early Learning Coalition, which is the organization that has authority and oversight over VPK and some other early learning opportunities for our students in the community. And they are wonderful partners that we work with. And the Chief Executive Officer is Mr. Tony Loop, and he could not be with us today. But we work regularly also with their Director of Programs, and I'd like to ask Deborah Lavelle come up and introduce herself as we thank her.
Good morning. My name is Deb Lavelle. I am the Director of Programs, and I'm honored to represent the Early Learning Coalition of St. Lucie County here today. We have general oversight over the school readiness funding for families that qualify, also the VPK program, and we have childcare resource and referrals. So those are our three main programs. There's 30 coalitions in the state. We all have the same end goal. We just get there differently. So part of what makes St. Lucie County very unique is the close relationship we have with our school district, not only our school district, but our Head Start program. And part of that is because of the working relationship over 10 years plus. I've been here 11 years. It's never been different. So we've actually collaborated. And as Dr. Wild said, the end goal, and what we really do try to do is make sure our children have the best, whether they're in a school board VPK, whether they're in a private provider, or whether they're in an ALPE Head Start. So I'm honored to represent the Early Learning Coalition. Thank you. Thank you for continued partnership. And we're very excited that, to be a part of this presentation and provide some of the information. Thank you.
Thank you, Deb. I would be remiss if I didn't also acknowledge that we have two board members that are on the Early Learning Coalition board, Dr. Donna Mills and Ms. Teresa Aronson. Both serve on that board. So they are big advocates for early learning in our community. So as Deb said, they have oversight over early learning and through two, basically funding sources that provide quality early learning to our children. One is what's known as VPK, Voluntary Pre-Kindergarten Program. It's actually a funding source. And the School Readiness Subsidized Childcare, governed by Florida's Division of Early Learning and also now the Department of Education. And they do provide all of the training for the communities, private providers, the early childhood educators that work with children in our daycare centers and private providers. They do training on STEM. They do trauma-informed care training, conscious discipline, just to name a few. They do a lot of training. They also work with parents and try to make sure that parents know what resources are out there and how to make sure that their students are learning on a daily basis. There are currently this year 2,371 students enrolled somewhere in VPK. And most of them are at the 86 private providers that the Early Learning Coalition authorizes. And we do have 16 of our own, in our own schools, serving 320 students right now. That's a little less than 10% of the age-eligible students for pre-K, but it is still a great contribution to early learning. Our early childhood educators do a phenomenal job. In addition, I'll share a little bit more about what School Readiness Subsidized Childcare is. There are 108 providers that work with the ELC under that program. And then there's also ESE pre-kindergarten. We do have 17 specialized classrooms that are not affiliated or funded by the ELC. And we won't be going into that today, but we wanted to distinguish between that because those programs are for three- and four-year-olds. What is voluntary pre-K? Well, Florida was the leader in this, to provide free, universal pre-kindergarten. So it's not income-based. It's for all families in the state of Florida. And you have to be four years old to be eligible. And that is the only eligibility for VPK. We'll talk about what that funds in a moment. The program's goals are to develop students intellectually, emotionally, socially, and physically to help ensure that they are ready to start school in kindergarten. I wanna just speak to the audience out there about how to apply. It is a two-step process that parents can apply for. And most parents are applying for the school year program that operates during the same calendar as the school district, the school months. And then there is also a summer program funded in the same manner. There are 540 instructional hours that VPK funds. That is basically a three-hour, we often refer to it as a half-day program, for our VPK students. During that time, class sizes may not exceed 20 students. It's a strict cap. And there is a teacher and an assistant in the classroom with those 20 students. In the summer, it's a 300-hour program that is funded, and class sizes may not exceed 12 students. When a parent wants to partake and have their child enroll in VPK anywhere, the first step is to go to ELC. And that's where they will meet Deb Lavelle and the staff there. And they can apply online, and they will receive a VPK certificate. And that covers the 300 hours of free VPK. With that certificate, they can apply to any of the private providers out there that are authorized by the ELC. And that includes our classrooms here in St. Lucie Public Schools. A separate funding source, a separate program altogether that they manage is the School Readiness Subsidized Childcare. This is funding that parents can access to support childcare from birth to age 13. So this is income-based for families looking for childcare immediately when their child is born, and it is completely separate and in addition to VPK, which is for all children. There are three eligibility requirements that families must meet. One is that the parents must work or go to school at least 20 hours a week. The second is the poverty measure, which is a gross family income of 150% of the federal poverty index. When there are funds available, when funds are authorized at the state level, it can go up to 200% of the federal poverty index. That sounds very complicated for parents. If they go to the ELC website, there's information there that helps them determine if they are indeed eligible for that. And then the parents must commit to a co-pay based on their income. So they do have to provide a supplement to that funding. And Deb did mention that the Early Learning Coalition also provides additional resources to families. It is a free community resource, and they are very helpful to our families. They will share with them where they can go for summer and holiday childcare. They will talk to them about how to get attention if their child has special needs, and they'll connect them to other community resources. So I'm gonna switch gears and talk about kindergarten readiness. A lot of people talk about that term. And I will tell you, since I've been in this role at the district level, kindergarten readiness has been measured a variety of ways with a number of different assessments over the years. So I'm gonna share how it's currently measured and what's changing. We are undergoing some changes in this regard. Right now, we are using the FAST Star Early Literacy Test. You are already familiar with this. This is part of our progress monitoring system. You hear about it a lot when we talk about kindergarten through grade 10, but our pre-K students also take it. But kindergarten readiness right now is measured in the first days, the first 30 days, when a student hits kindergarten. So it's measuring them after they've arrived to see if they were prepared to be there. Students must score a 690 or higher to be considered kindergarten-ready. And then when we get the reports, it does take a while, but when we get the reports back, we get it reported in three different ways. One is for all students enrolled in VPK. What's the overall? That's the one we usually refer to when we talk about kindergarten readiness. Then they break it down further and tell us, what is the kindergarten readiness rate for those students that are considered completers, meaning they attended 70% or more of the program hours? So if the student is attending and benefiting from the program, you will see those results are a little bit higher as opposed to those students that are attending less regularly. And then also students that did not enroll or attend VPK at all. We do get that measure as well at the county level. When we talk about pre-K and what early educators are responsible for, it is generally accepted that they are responsible for eight domains of development, and they're all listed here to include physical development, social-emotional, language and literacy, mathematics, social studies, science inquiry, approaches to learning, and creative expression. Kindergarten readiness currently being measured by the STAR Early Literacy Test measures two of them, and it's primarily language and literacy that it measures. And there are three to five questions on mathematical thinking in the measurement for kindergarten readiness now. For the 2023, which are the most recent results that they've reported so far, the kindergarten readiness in St. Lucie County is 47%, and statewide, it's 51%. To give you a little bit going back further from when STAR Early Literacy has been used, you will see it's been pretty constant. If you look at that chart, you can see in the measuring fall 2021, which means the students were in pre-K 1920, you will see kindergarten readiness in St. Lucie County was 49%. The following year, it was 47%. And then it stayed 47% last year. And then you'll see for the state, 50, 49, and 51. Relatively close and relatively static. The three categories that I mentioned, I'm showing you the 2023 breakdown. 47%, as I just shared with you, that is all of the students who took the test in kindergarten. So that means there could be some that weren't here the year before, but all of them, 2,949 students in 2023 took the test. 47% scored kindergarten-ready. Out of those, 1,613 attended a VPK program, 70% more of the program hours, of the funded 540 hours, and they scored 57%. So you can see, you know, there's quite an increase there for students who attend every day. And then 957 of them were not in VPK anywhere, and they scored 31% kindergarten-ready. So that does illustrate the benefits of taking advantage and attending a VPK program in the county. There is another measure when we talk about pre-VPK accountability measures. And this is a test that's relatively new. And it is, it's not a test. It's an assessment system, and it's called the Classroom Assessment Scoring System. And it is completely observational. There are trained observers that go into the providers' classrooms, and they watch the interaction between the teacher and the children in the classroom. And they're looking for the domains in emotional support, classroom organization, and instructional support. How well is this classroom functioning? And then they give a rating to it. And that rating must be four or above to continue to participate in the VPK program. So it's a high-stakes rating for private providers and for our school district classrooms. So two things are changing on the kindergarten readiness. I said you have to score 690. That's for that one measure. That score is going up to 707 this year. So that's changing. And then for the providers, the metric that gives them their performance designation, which communicates to parents the quality level of the program, is changing. It is going to include three measures now. The class observation that I just shared on that scale, where you have to be four or higher, it goes up to seven. Also, how the students do on that kindergarten readiness measure? Actually, no. How the students do on the FAST PM3 in pre-K. And then also a growth measure. I know the providers are very happy to have a growth measure in there because educators do believe that growth is a very important measure of student learning. So this is new this year. We will see the outcome for the first time at the end of this year, countywide, statewide. In St. Lucie Public Schools, with the class rating component of it, our ratings in our 16-classroom ranged from 5.17 to 7. And as you know from the last board meeting, we did have a perfect seven. And we recognized the Bay Shore Elementary Classroom, which is the teacher and the paraprofessional, for their perfect seven because that was one of five perfect sevens across the state since this assessment has come out. So it's over 10,000 ratings have been given, and only seven of them were a perfect seven. So we really did wanna recognize Bay Shore's classroom for that accomplishment. Okay, St. Lucie Public Schools, our own VPK classrooms. We do have outstanding leadership. It's housed in the Office of Teaching and Learning with Denise Rodriguez under Heather Belitho as the Director of Elementary Curriculum. Our early childhood coordinator is Dr. Mary Huffstetter. Mary, if you could stand and be recognized. And along with her, we have Cassie Velasquez, does an awesome job as a VPK program specialist. And Cassie goes out and provides support to our classrooms, as does Mary. Mary also works with other grade levels, early primary grade levels in our elementary schools. And in talking to Mary, she has been here since we started, well, she's been here for a long time, but she's been here since we started our own VPK classrooms. And that started in 2005-06, I believe. That was our first year of having our own VPK classrooms and taking advantage and utilizing the VPK funding. And then we have subsidized it, as I'm about to share. So we do have 16 classrooms, and we serve 320 VPK students annually. I already mentioned the classrooms are capped at 20. And each classroom, we do staff with a teacher and a paraprofessional. All of our VPK classrooms are full-day programs. We do not get funded for the rest of the costs that go along with it. We subsidize that to make it possible through Title I. And we currently, the cost of that is over $900,000 this year to be able to subsidize that. We advocate for increased funding for VPK in the state of Florida because we do believe that the full-day program not only offers more benefits to the students, but it's more accessible to families who work and can't necessarily take advantage of a half-day program. We do have two types of seats in our VPK classrooms. We do have the one I just mentioned that's subsidized by Title I program, and that is for the students that meet certain qualifications. We do also subsidize part of the cost with some of the seats being a parent-pay program for those parents who otherwise their children wouldn't qualify to access our seats. The students that are in the Title I program seats must meet the criteria to enter. And those are based on some risk factors, some Title I risk factors of economic factors, social-emotional, and academic factors. And we are very busy in the month of February screening the children for those qualifications. Then in addition, we offer seats to those that would not qualify. And those parents pay 370 a month during the school year to be able to access the rest of the seats and to be able to maintain those seats without an increased cost to Title I. The application period for parents, and I can tell you, we receive a lot of applications, so it's well-marketed. It is from January 6th to January 24th. And the screenings are conducted in early February every year. Takes a great team effort to get those done. And we screened 575 students this year for our VPK seats. Those notifications will go out by the end of March. And so any family that got screened with us, that doesn't get a seat with us, they then seek other VPK seats across St. Lucie County. Early learning countywide. So as I have illustrated, we are not authorized to provide oversight and do not get funding to support the rest of the early learning providers in the county. However, we collaborate with them all the time to the extent that it's been recognized, and we've been asked to speak in other places. And I'll celebrate those in a minute. But first, I wanna focus on the annual professional development that we do provide for all early educators through the Most Professional Conference. And I know some of you have attended in the past. It's the Early Learning, Early Childhood Conference. It used to be held at Fort Pierce Central. It's currently held here in this building. It is every single year. It's getting bigger and better every year since the first time we started it. This year, we had 180 early childhood educators attend. This is a collaboration between St. Lucie Public Schools, ALPE Head Start, and the Early Learning Coalition. Forty-four private providers participated this year. It really has served as a model for the state. The Chancellor of Early Education, Carrie Miller, talks about it all the time. She was our keynote speaker last year and attended, added great value to the conference. And we now have 22 business partners and vendors that come out and support it. And I know when we first started, we relied on one or two sponsors, and now it has expanded. Everybody wants to come. Some of the partners provide part of the professional development. Some of them give free giveaways when they're talking to the early educators. It's a very exciting day. Just gonna show you some highlights of this year's. We had some great photos. You can see Mary and Deb Lavelle there celebrating. You can see everybody funneling into this lobby here as they were checking in. And that is Tony Loop, the Chief Executive Officer on the right there. He's here every year, part of the day. See everybody happy and celebrating. More celebration. And then you see Mrs. Holly. She comes every single year waving to the crowd. And that's Heather Belitho on the left, and Cassie Velasquez on the right. And then I just wanted to show you how the vendors set up. It really does look like a professional state-run conference. If you've attended conferences, they look just like this. You see, we have our Kids at Hope out here supporting Early Steps, some of the different vendors. We also feature the New World's Reading Initiative from Representative Tribalsi, who's the one that initiated that for free at-home reading for our children. I mentioned the recognition. Our district was asked to present by the Children's Movement of Florida, which advocates for early learning policies and funding and so forth. And in the picture to the right, you can see that's Mandy Roland, State Literacy Regional Director that used to work for St. Lucie Public Schools. We have Deb Lavelle, Mary Huffstetter. That is Chancellor Miller there, and then Tony Loop. And you can see some of our other educators, and Cassie Velasquez on the left. When they presented to this group, it was such a hit, they were then asked to present to other groups. Next, they presented to the Head Start Collaborative Office because a lot of Head Starts report that they can't get a lot of traction on a partnership with other providers and their school districts. And so they went and presented and shared how it's done. And then they were asked to present to the Technical Assistance and Training System, which is for ESE students, ESE early providers. And so Mary and all the others then collaborated with our ESE department to present there. So that's putting St. Lucie on the map as a destination district. And that's all I have for early learning today. And I'm gonna open it up to any questions or comments from Dr. Prince.
Board members, are there any comments or any questions at this time?
I do have one question. And I'm wondering if you've already mentioned it and maybe it went over my head.
Okay.
But the question is, as far as kindergarten readiness, how do we perform as a school district on that with our VPK students?
Okay, that is an excellent question, and I did not explicitly mention that. So the twenty, it's very lagging data and they don't give it to us that way. So we are working and the state is working to perfect that system. And it's, we, you hear us talking about a lot of the data transparency now that the state is working on across entities. It's the same issue we're having with the Family Empowerment Scholarships. It's very similar to what we're having in the VPK world. Is getting everyone on the same ID in the same system, putting, entering the students' names the same way. So we've been able to hand do that for two years, twenty twenty-one and twenty twenty-two. And we do perform higher, seventy-six and sixty-six percent. So approximately ten percent, no, uh, ten percent higher than the rating I gave for those kids that attend, seventy percent more than the days. I know that sounds complicated. We do, we do perform higher and we attribute that. We have certified teachers and a full-day program that we subsidize. And we also have direct support in the classroom on a daily basis with, with our staff. So it is higher. We do not yet have that data for twenty twenty-three. And the data for twenty twenty-four for all providers has not been released yet. So because I didn't have it for the last two years, I didn't put it on the chart. But for the two years we do have it, it is, it is higher.
We had it and it was confusing.
Yeah.
Because it was, because it lags, it's a few years behind. And Helen, if you could go back to slide twenty-three.
Sure.
That, that's where you had the, the chart that shows the students that take advantage of VPK versus those that don't. And I think if they have that slide in front of them, then it's probably easier to explain kind of our readiness versus, you know.
So, so in twenty twenty-three, on this chart in the middle, out of the ones that came to VPK, seventy percent or more, fifty-seven percent, this is all kindergartners though, scored kindergarten ready. Forty-seven percent for the kids that were enrolled. And then if you use the previous year to explain it, you can see that it was forty-nine percent in the previous year, twenty, um, twenty twenty-one. It was forty-seven percent in twenty-two. Those two years, our kindergarten readiness for our VPK kids were seventy-six and sixty-six percent.
I, I think it's, I think it's, that's a great question, Dr. Mills, because we, we, we argued yesterday as we were preparing this whether to include that slide because we thought it would create more questions. But actually, our students for the twenty-one and twenty-two school year actually performed significantly better than the other students in, that were enrolled in other programs.
That, that's, that's correct. So as soon as we have it for the others, we could update this chart so you could see that?
Okay, thank you, Dr. Wild.
Yes, you're welcome.
Madam Chair. The, the whole reason why, I guess we wanted to look at this, I'm really not sure who wanted to look at this, but whoever wanted to look at this, you made the comment that we're fifty-nine out of sixty-seven counties for kindergarten readiness. So you're telling me between forty-seven and fifty percent were, were that far behind in numbers?
It's because they've changed exams. That, that was like five years ago. But they've gone through a, a number of different exams. Do we, and, and I don't know if we have the.
I mean, I didn't come up with these numbers. You guys did, so I'm just asking, you know. So where's the disconnect? And you know, what are we, what, I mean, is it the thousand kids that aren't? Are we trying to help them get more kids involved in readiness, readiness? I mean, I'm trying to figure out what's the point here.
The, the question did come up to see if we are, if we're struggling with kindergarten readiness. It is lower than the state. It is not significantly lower than the state. So we did want to illustrate that. This is, this is data from the state.
That's why I was wondering. So how is it, why are we fifty-nine out of sixty-seven?
Yeah. I did a poll, the rankings. That is an excellent question. I can tell you, there is no state release data on that that answers that question for twenty twenty-four. We can go and hand do it for twenty twenty-three and see on the latest data. I know that was, that was not recent data that Dr. Prince, that you're referring to, Mr. Ingersoll. But our ranking, if we do the same exercise that Dr. Prince does with our other data, when you account for poverty rates, which we know are, are relevant, our ranking did go, last time we hand calculated it, went up by twelve positional rankings. But I don't have that data here today because it's not current. As soon as it is current, we will share it with the board members.
I think, I think one of the biggest, I think the question is how do we improve our VPK performance? Okay, because readiness rates do, you know, we are behind the state. And we, we have limited control over kindergarten readiness because the state only funds a half a day and it's based on who is taking advantage. We, we can see on that same slide, the big discrepancy between students that, that take advantage of VPK, fifty-seven percent readiness rate versus thirty-one percent, the students that do not. I think one of the biggest things that we are going, hopefully, to see, the best way to improve kindergarten readiness is to improve the education, the education of the parents that are having children, okay? And also the economic factors that affect our families. And I think over the last eight years, we've had a graduation rate that exceeds ninety percent. We've seen the enrollment at Indian River State College improve to, to where I think fifty-five, fifty-four percent of the graduating class at Westwood enrolled at IRSC. I think over time, you're going to see, when you talk about kindergarten readiness, it's a huge lag to the changes that we've made in our school system and the success we're having. But as the economic factors include, improve in our families, you're going to see kindergarten readiness go up. And I think the best thing we can do is to encourage our families to take advantage the best they can of the VPK programs because they are effective. And particularly ours, you know, if they can get into ours, then, then they're very effective.
We do advocate as a district, and I know other entities do as well, to try to increase funding for VPK because it is critically important. Although we were one of the first, we are significantly below the national average for VPK funding, which is about seven thousand per student versus our three thousand. I'm rounding. It's, it's, that's not exact. So we do advocate for that to, to be able to increase the length of the day and the private provider's ability to operate. The cost of doing business in this, in this field has gone up and the funding hasn't really kept up with that. So we do advocate for that and also advocate for every effort to educate parents to take advantage of it. You know, we have nine hundred and fifty-seven kindergarten students in twenty twenty-three that did not. And it's available to all four-year-olds. It's not income-based.
Okay. Tell us, when, when you say the importance of parents educating the parents, we know how important that is. But tell us, how are we as a district educating the parents? Are we having parent meetings periodically? What are we doing in that area to help the parents understand? And I just had a parent meeting at my after-school program and the parents did show up big time. I was surprised, even the men, a lot of, we had quite a few men. They want to, they want to know how to do it, you know? But how, what are we doing as a district to get those parents, draw them in and make sure we educate them?
That's an excellent question. So our influence there is really with families that have children in our school and have younger siblings. So we do have Title One nights at our schools. We do collaborate with agencies to get the word out to those families. Every school has a parent, a parent liaison that works with our district office to have parent events, to educate and do this kind of thing. And we speak a lot about early learning when there's a younger sibling in the family. It's really much broader than that because it's not under the direct purview of the school district. We, we reach out as far as we have influence over. But a lot of what we do is serving on community organizations, boards, the Roundtable of St. Lucy, other places, working with the Early Learning Coalition to help them get the word out. So it's a massive outreach. All the organizations that sit on the Roundtable and serve with the Children's Services Council, some of them are dedicated to that birth to age four, age group. And they even go into the homes and share this information. So it takes a village, as they say, and a lot of collaboration. I know several of you sit on those boards and do that work along with us.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I had a question. It'd be interesting to find out what percentage of the parents who are not taking advantage of VPK, who are eligible, their eligible children are their oldest child, you know, because they're not coming in contact with either a daycare center because they're, it's unaffordable or they don't have an older child in the school system, so they're not aware of. But it is a disadvantage because it is not a full-day program. Both Dr. Mills and I do sit on the Early Learning Coalition. I am the vice chair actually this year, which for a lack of a chair designation, makes me the chair. So we do struggle with getting the word out because if they don't have any child in contact with a current provider or the school system, they're unaware of their ability to take advantage of the VPK program. So, you know, our only recourse is, is probably, you know, churches, social groups, that sort of thing. So it'd be interesting to find out how many are in that percentage that have a first-time child eligible for VPK because we've got to figure out a better way to, to get them, you know, informed. So I don't know if you have that information or if maybe the Early Learning Coalition has that information, the state, but.
No, that's an excellent suggestion there in surveying, for example, the nine hundred and fifty-seven that didn't and asking a lot of different questions. We have the, once they, once they register in kindergarten and they take this test and then we know who they are, well, we know how many. Once they perfect the data system, the data sharing, we'll start to get better information. And then we possibly could survey the families. But right now, because they're not all using the same ID number, they're not all using the same nomenclature for their name, we're not able to do that. But that is an identified gap in the state of Florida and they are working to fix it. And once they fix it, it'll give us a lot of benefits and one of them will be able to, to survey them and see if we can pinpoint some of the reasons why they're not hearing about it or not taking advantage.
My other comment on that nine hundred and fifty-seven is how many of them are, are new to the county coming in?
Right, which makes the.
Yeah, moving from another state, they may not have it.
True, yeah. And if you looked at it statewide, you get a better indication because of that moving between districts. You're absolutely right.
Ms. Richardson, do you have a question?
Yes, I, I have a question. Thank you, Madam Chair. My question is, when I look at, I guess, page twenty-three, I'm not even at page twenty-three. The, we have data here. Are the, twenty-four, are the preschools, are they teaching the same things? Is there a curriculum that they have to teach before they get to kindergarten? Because this information is based on the kids that are taking the test. So this is what we are talking about, not necessarily they're taking the test, have taken the test.
So they all take the same tests now in the state of Florida. If they are a VPK provider, they take the same STAR Early Literacy Test, PM one, PM two, and PM three. It's when they get to us that they take the test again for kindergarten readiness measures. The curriculum, they all have the same expectations of standards and what they, the standards are supposed to teach. But they do not all, they're not all required to use the same curriculum resources. Each provider can select their own.
But is it a, is it a resource from, let's say, the state? So they, like, like with the district, you, you choose from whatever. Do they have books that are standard that you choose from these books? Or you can just go, you know?
In terms of the private classrooms, you're asking, the private providers?
Right, or, yeah.
Okay. They, they select their own and they're, they're not restricted by what they can select. As long, they know what the standards are that they are expected to follow. That's part of why we do the conference and bring in products that we know meet the standards so they can be exposed to them. And, and we do model how to use them in that conference every single year.
So there, there are, there are these expectations so they know to meet those expectations. But I mean, there's, I'm just thinking that there's got to be maybe some guideline, not necessarily some guidelines. Yes, guidelines, but, you know, books. If you expect to be at a certain place when, or the district expects them to be at a certain place, then maybe there should be some, there are books that they need to read or master these, these according to what the district's expectations are when they get here.
Yeah, I, I do understand what you're saying a hundred percent and we can share your concern at the state level. We have no direct authority over the private providers. We can, we do not have any authority over them. We can't tell them what they have to use, purchase. They are, they have to use their own funding and it's out of the Division of Early Learning and the Department of Education. So we can share that as a suggestion for the state to implement. But that would go through our channels with the, the direct authority over private providers.
You know, and this is not any way to, 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 you know, but it's just to tell people what they need to do, to tell, you know, to control. But it's just, I think, just a way of maybe, you know, if you do this, then it will meet, you know, they, they'll be able to pass the test if you use these books or whatever.
Oh, agreed. And we do that. That is what we do at the, at the conference every year. And the, and the state, like I said, the state comes to the conference. We know that they're aware that we do that as a best practice. We, we bring them out and we teach them. And one of the things they struggle with in those private providers is turnover. It's not a high-paying job and so they struggle to keep teachers, which is why even though it's more successful every year, we're not going to stop because we find there's new educators every single year joining. And even new coordinators at the provider level. Because of turnover, we're, we're going to stick at it. You know, we're going to keep working on providing that information to them. But at the end of the day, it's an independent provider decision as to what they implement at their centers.
Thank you.
But they do have to remain authorized to offer VPK. So if they don't meet the state criteria, then the Early Learning Coalition would not allow them to continue to be a VPK providers. And that new metric that I shared that has the three different measures now, that'll give them a performance designation. And if it's too low, they would lose the ability to be funded through VPK certificates. So there is a criteria they have to meet to continue to offer that service to the community. So there is an incentive for independent providers to, to make sure they're providing quality curriculum to the children.
Do we have our provider, our curriculum people there as well at the, because that would give that provider maybe the option to choose the same type of curriculum that we use here? Is it, what, what can we do?
Can you restart, can you say that again? I'm sorry, I missed that.
We can't hear you, Ms. Holly.
Do we have our people at the conference? Is that your question?
Do we have our curriculum people at the conference?
Yes.
Like we have other curriculum people there?
Yes, yes.
And do they, do the provider know what curriculum the school district is using? Or do they need to reach out themselves and contact us?
No, they know. We communicate all of that information with them. It's part of what Mary and Cassie do. And our, our district staff does a lot of the breakout sessions at that conference every single year.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Thank you, Dr. Wild, for clarifying that the Early Learning Coalition dollars are tied to some performance. So if they're, I wanted to make sure that you understood that, that if they are receiving Early Learning Coalition dollars, they do have some performance-based curriculum they have to provide. So they, they do have, people are out in those centers. They're making sure that they are, they are performing.
And that includes all measures of quality early learning, that the teacher-child interaction as well as the, the scores, the achievement scores that they're. as well as the, the scores, the achievement scores that they're receiving through PM one, two, and three.
Board member, are we clear with questions or do we have any other comments or questions? Thank you, Dr. Wild, and also we want to thank Mary and Cassie as well and Tony Lupe and Deborah, thank you so much for your, what you do every day in this community. We appreciate all of you.
Thank you.
All right, thank you, Dr. Wild. Don't, don't get too comfortable, Dr. Wild, because you will be coming back up here shortly. Next, we're going to have Mr. O'Leary to give us a quick construction update before we get to our chief of schools, Dr. Summer, our illustrious chief of operations, Mr. Terrence, 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 Terrence. Oh, 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 Leary, Leary, Leary.
Thank, thank you, Dr. Summers. Very much appreciated, everyone. Thank you so much. Anyway, good, good morning, Chairman Dr. Mills, board members, and our illustrious superintendent. Today, I'm going to briefly talk about specifically one project with just a little bit of summary of the two high schools, but I did want to start off, and I would be remiss without introducing our team, who is working diligently on all of these construction projects. So with me today, I have our director of facilities, Matthew Weber, if you could stand, not just raise your hand. Matthew Weber, our code enforcement administrator, Bob Massa, who looks at and inspects and pulls all the permits for all of these work that we go through. And lastly, for the Western Grove, this is our senior project manager, he'll oversee this build, and that's Anthony Ray. He's our senior project manager for that. And you know Anthony because we've already turned over the Cast Cafeteria, that was his last project, so that opened up in January, so we're really excited about that. In addition to that, it is a collaborative effort. This isn't just facilities. So by that, working with our CFO, Michelle Thomas, and also our procurement director, Kim Allbritton, and in addition to our inner local government, Nicole Fogarty, all of them have skills and tasks within these projects to make them come to fruition. And I am honored to serve with them as a teammate to make sure that we're providing the best facilities for our students and their education here in St. Lucie County. With that said, I'm going to start with our Western Grove project. It is ready to kick off and it is a great opportunity and time because that will start this week, and it's twofold. By that, as you recall, about two years, I came before you and said, the Tradition area is growing. We need to get on a bus and need to drive out and take a look at this area. We have a large-scale growth and we have no schools at that time in this area. Since then, the work of the board, as well as the direction of the superintendent and our teammates, we have taken over Palm Point Elementary, K-8. In addition to that, I'm orienting you to the Crosstown Parkway that is being developed. That is now open, Crosstown is now open for our construction teams and work, so it goes all the way to our school site, and we expect Crosstown all the way out to Legacy to be open mid-March this year. So in a few weeks, that will be open to the public. Also, this is where Legacy is, right here, and you can see, I'll do a little bit, two slides just on the status of where we are with Legacy. And then lastly, I want to orient you to where the Western Grove, that is not its official name, that's what we're calling it in construction. We learned our lesson after Triple D. This would have been FFA, so we are now just calling this the Western Grove K-8 for you. And that's located right off of Tradition Parkway. You can see it's right next to the Regional Park, that 110-acre Regional Park. They are back neighbors, right next to each other, and we'll be able to use our memorandum of understanding so we can share the resources that are out there. And in addition to that, since we've last met, the roadway going in will be called, and it's been named by the city, Sundance Vista Boulevard. That would be where the school sits on. Let me clarify that one more time, Sundance Vista Boulevard, that is where the school will be located. We expect that road to start in a week in March. The lift stations will be completed in December of 2025, and we then expect all the road asphalt completed with the sidewalks, February of 2026, with the opening a year from today, March 2026. So that road will be giving us the entrance into our site there in Western Grove. Here's a rendering of what that looks like. It is something that's very familiar to you because it is Westgate, it is Sam Gaines, Okamic, Palm Point, has a little bit of different look to it, but you'll see that this is on 21 acres, 21.4 to be exact. It has 1,900 student stations. The bus loop is equipped to handle 40 buses. We average about 30 buses for our K-8 environments, so we have a threshold of 40 to keep them off the road. And then also from past lessons, Palm Point and other areas, we expanded the stacking to 284 vehicles in the parent loop for that, so we'll be able to do that. And then I'm going to show you a little bit different, something that we're adding to it with working with the developer out there. Because of the sidewalks and the golf cart industry, we'll have a little bit of new functionality at that school site. Right in front of the school, that is where you see Sundance, so that is going to go north and south, and north all the way to Crosstown, and then from Crosstown, it will go all the way to Mid, Midway Road, and south, it will head towards the Becker Road from there as well. Right now, you're looking at the circle there, that's the administration wing, just like you're familiar with at our, our local K-8s, that's the administration on the bottom. We have some resource rooms on the second floor, media center, those types of things. The two classroom areas are here, these two buildings, both the first floor and second floor, pod-based solution, the gymnasium, and then the auditorium or cafeteria, whatever you prefer, that will have a stage just like our other K-8 construction projects. In addition, I wanted to bring this up, similar concept, just the roadway, everything else, but I'm going to add two to the left, you'll see two rectangles. Those are additional sidewalks that we're working with the developer to put in golf cart access. Remember, this will have a lot of communities based in there. We will say that you need to be 16-year-old, so we will not be doing parking permits for second graders to pull in their golf cart when they're coming to school. Kidding, I'm kidding, you have, do have to be 16. But we do have the access to it because it also will have access through a gate when the park will be available. There'll be some access for us to get into that park through a back gate, so we'll be having those as well. So I wanted you to just be able to see those types of things. This building's about two, it is 217,000 square feet, and all of the buildings, giving you a backside of the rendering of what that will look like for you.
And I'm sorry, Mr. O'Leary, because this is such, can you go back to the slide with the, the golf carts?
Yes, sir.
Yes.
That one there.
So, so this is actually a solution to ease traffic congestion because all of these communities that go on that Tradition Parkway, they have a separate lane for golf carts next to the sidewalk, and everybody, everybody seemingly has a golf cart. So this is also a function of, of trying to reduce regular car traffic as well to have that solution. So I just wanted, it does make sense if you live there, so just, but it's new to us. But anyway, sorry, Mr. O'Leary.
No worries, absolutely. Everything about the, it is our prototypical K-8 school, so everything in our environments are the same. You see that as you enter any of the schools I mentioned, from Palm Point to Westgate and Okamic. Some of the things that we're highlighting is the sustainability, just like in our other schools, we have high-efficiency chillers, we'll be using LED lighting for efficiency, water savings through toilets, faucets, and fixtures, those types of things going through, all energy is equipment, Energy Star equipment, so that we're efficient all the way through. As Dr. Prince mentioned, here are building with, into that community, providing the access via those types of vehicles, golf carts, and making it available. It is adjacent to that 110-acre regional sports park, so we will be able to share the resources from the schools. We've already talked with the city and we'll continue to be good partners with them in allowing us to do that. Just wanted to give you some, what it looks like at this point. So again, I told you that the road will be starting the first week in March. You already can see that we're already preparing the dirt for the site, so they'll go through. It's a little different than when with Westwood and taking all the trees, there are really no trees on this site. So we're already preparing by putting all the fill that will be needed for the site, has been stocked to the south part of it, and that will begin February 25th. As you can see, all the grading, the underground utilities will begin here this week and go through the end of March. You can see here our schedule, the construction overview, with us turning that building over in May to be opened for August of 2026. So you can see we are on time. Right now, most of our work has been through pre-construction, all the bids, subcontractors, getting all the bids, all the long-term types of need are already out and procured with our purchasing teams. Wanted to say that the builder, construction management company on this is Wharton Smith. As you are aware, that's a voting item that you voted back a while ago. So with that said, I wanted to bring up a little bit Legacy and Fort Pierce Westwood High School. So you can see much different on the look. This is our Legacy High School. To the right there is all of the Crosstown Parkway. It's two-lane, north and south. You see that goes all the way from Village Parkway all the way through to Range Line. That, again, will be open in mid-March, so you can see that we've moved forward. You can see the grading of the fields in the back, I can give you a different look here, but we're starting to bring the fields. What I wanted to show you, though, a little bit from the back, if you look right here, that's 0.9 miles to the new Western Grove K-8. So as the road comes through, it will be about 0.9 miles, so a nice pathway from K-8 right into Legacy High School as you bring it right in there. Westwood looks much different now. All the buildings are up, all the tilt wall is up, they're starting to dry in, that's windows and doors, and then they'll start framing out those buildings as well. The agricultural barn is being raised right now, so something neat on that. I know Dr. Prince is inspired by this as well. We've actually used some of that steel and metal from the old barn, we had it all checked, and we're incorporating that to bring the legacy from the old school into the new school. Kids were signing their names, we want them to sign it on the steel so that there is that commitment from it. Here's the backside, you can see that they're a little further along on their fields because they've used that multi-field because they are in session. So you can see the baseball field there on the left, the multipurpose field that they used for soccer, and then in the farther side of that is the softball field. So you can see the complex is already in there. They have chosen to use lawn wood for their baseball because we are still finishing out the fencing for this year, and they want to make sure the sod takes place. But you get a good feeling of the progress that's being made at both sites. And Dr. Prince has asked us to save this date because we're going to do a field trip, and I'll let Dr. Prince fill you in a little bit more on that.
Yeah, so we're very excited, we're going to be doing our groundbreaking. So what, what I would propose is our next workshop, our next workshop is March 25th, and in lieu of being in here in the boardroom for our workshop, we would start our day at the groundbreaking at 9:00 AM, March 25th, at the Western Grove K-8 site. We'd have our dignitaries, we do our ribbon-cutting groundbreaking, and then we would move that to whoever wanted to attend, it's almost like the prize patrol. So we'd be in our own cars, we'd go and meet at Legacy High where we, Mr. Smith would kind of lead us through a tour of, we will be under air at that point in Legacy, lead us through a quick tour of Legacy High and the work that's been done because that school's going to open up in just a few months. And then for those who wanted to participate, we'd take a ride up to Fort Pierce Westwood and see the progress that's being made on that school, and that would conclude our, our board workshop for that, for that day. And I also wanted to commend, I know Terrence recognized the team, but they have done an amazing job. Just to think that, that we're going to be on schedule to open the Western Grove K-8 in August of 2026 is nothing short of miraculous considering we're concurrently building two high schools, and, and our, you know, our operational people are just doing an amazing job, and I just wanted to, to hear it from me, kudos to you guys that are here today, so they've just done an amazing job. And also, Mr. O'Leary, you know, on time, on budget, on schedule, that's just critically important, and I would open it up to any question any board members would have.
Any questions or comment, board members? Seeing them, we'll move forward. Thank you, Ms. O'Leary.
You're welcome. Thank you for your time.
All right, so, great job, Mr. O'Leary. Mr. O'Leary, just make sure it doesn't rain March 25th, that's all I'm going to ask. Thanks. So next, I wanted to bring up Dr. Summer, our chief of schools, and I, and I, this is a kind of something that I was, yes. I'm, I'm excited now, I get excited about data and data initiatives, and this is something that I get super excited about because I remember when I first started in the district 10 years ago, and I met with Mr. O'Leary, it was one of the first times I met with, with Terrence, and he was the, what was your role then?
Chief Information Officer.
Chief Information Officer. And I remember going into the conference room in the old mall, that's where the district used to be, and he showed me this data warehouse that had a whole lot of information, but I, I was really frustrated because the ease of use was, was, I just feel like if you've got a tool, it needs to be intuitive. And we started down the path of using Microsoft, and I asked Terrence, I remember I had a spreadsheet, how could I put this spreadsheet in a, in a visual that's going to tell a story that would be easily understandable? And that's kind of where we started, and when, and Craig's going to get into this a little bit, but Dr. Summer, when he came on board, one of Dr. Summer's gifts is really having a real knowledge of understanding software programs, and he took the work that was done through IT and the work that I did as a deputy superintendent, and it's just on a completely, just a complete another level. I've been blown away with what they've been able to do. And this has been what they're going to share with you today, it's been a game changer for us with regards to how it's driving everything we do as a district. And I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Summer. I get, I get giddy about this, some of you may be bored, but I will be excited.
Well, thank you, Dr. Prince. I appreciate that intro. Madam Chair, school board, let's have some fun today. Our title is, what you measure is what matters and how data points make a transformational difference in your performance. And our agenda is, first, what is Power BI, which Dr. Prince just mentioned, and then how do we leverage that to improve student outcomes, maximize staff efficacy, and effectively allocate resources? And there's time for some Q and A as well. So first, what is Power BI? So I can orientate you to the picture on the right is a screenshot, and as Dr. Prince said, it's a Microsoft tool that enables you to visualize data and interpret data in a different way, on, on demand quickly so you can actually pivot and improve student outcomes. It's incredible. It's a great lever. So this is a zoom in as to what the program looks like. So it's from Microsoft, so if you think about it, it's really easy to use, point and click, just like Word, Excel, and PowerPoint, except it's Microsoft Power BI. And I'll highlight an example, and I'm going to go through a couple of examples today out of the 100 or so that we use on a daily basis, obviously for, you know, to make the presentation more fun and engaging. So let's take a quick look at attendance. So imagine that red box I clicked. So imagine that red box, I click on that, and as before the program opens, I want to remind you of just how impressive our attendance increases have been that we've shared with you and how this tool levers those thousand additional students. Because once you open the program, and here's your screenshot from the program, that literally is just a simple click, and we set it up to where if you're the principal of seeing more, you can quickly identify your students that have significant numbers of absences, and that's what I've just highlighted. And as you can see, they can quickly see their percentage of kids that have between 15 and 19 absences, 20 and 24 absences. So they can drill down quickly to find out who are my most at-risk students because they're not coming to school, okay? And this is our first example, and also in the program you see at the top, I'll zoom in on that, we have what's called drill downs. So principals, district leaders, assistant principals can easily just click a drop-down box and personalize their data. School name, we go back to multiple years, you can drill down by grade level, gender, race, you can highlight certain subgroups, and so on. The key to this is, is it, is it makes the dashboard consistent and easy to use no matter what you're looking at. So this is the first example of attendance, but just think, I'll show you a couple more examples, each of them have these drill downs. Another quick example, before I do that, I mentioned the ease of use, there is a report description. Because for Power BI, before I go to more examples, the key is for us to institutionalize this, and we do that with consistency and consistent training. So I'll go to another quick example. Again, this is our customized dashboard, and although Power BI is a tool from Microsoft, this dashboard is specific to St. Lucie County, and as Dr. Prince said, we're essentially a combination of artists and technicians to create this for the needs that we have. And it's a reciprocal process because we think of things that we think we need, but honestly, as we, as we engage with our stakeholders, our principals and our district leaders, we create additional dashboards for things that we're going to need. So just keep that in mind. Let's talk about graduation for a second.
Craig, before we go, and I always do this to you, I'm sorry.
No, I'm shocked.
And I, I just wanted to make sure that the board understood that, that all of the things that you're seeing, those were not created for us. We create those. Basically, Power BI is just a tool to visualize information. And if we can dream it, we can create it. That's when he talked about the art of what tells a story. I always like, I'm a visual learner, so whenever I look at information, what story is it telling me? Because you can get overwhelmed with numbers, and not only does it tell a story, but actually you can drill into the individual students, what Craig was talking about, that if I want to see the students that are the 2% of the students that have missed between 15 and 19 days, I hit the next button, it's going to give me all those kids and the days that they've missed. So it's just really powerful, and as we've, we've, you know, when Dr. Summers come on board, we've been able to add some things that are, that are true game changers, and he's going to share that with you in a minute. But I just want to make sure this isn't a product we buy, it's basically using this tool to create our own intellectual property. Sorry, Craig.
No, sir, no. I appreciate that, and there is a nuance to it. So, you know, another quick example, student graduation. We all know that graduating kids is really one of our main purposes, right? As we're all here, make sure they're successful adults, and we want to celebrate that we're one of three districts over the last eight years that has had a 90-plus graduation rate, 90-plus percent. And a real simple way to look at it, whether you're, you know, you're not an expert, but if you, you already look at our dashboard, this is our graduation dashboard, and I just orientate you, whether you can see that or not, that that's where you select the school, you're Fort Pierce Central, and you're looking at the 2025 school year. And you're tracking who's on track to graduate. You can do this in real time, and as we know for graduation, you have to pass the reading test. So I orientate you to this box. Well, how many kids have met reading at my school? And then when I orientate you to this box again, whether you can see that or not, the green is good, the red are, I've got 66 students that have not met the reading requirement. And to Dr. Prince's point, I want to know who they are. So I literally take my mouse on the red and I right-click, and when I right-click, boom, okay, I'm allowed to create a data point, which is allowing me to export those names into a spreadsheet so I can then act on it. And that's a key point because it's that simple. Right-click, click on a button, download to a spreadsheet, share with my guidance team, make phone calls, organize plans, and that's our key here is that this program is extremely actionable. And we talk about data, I think what can't be lost, and anytime I mention data, every single data point's a child. So we want to be able to give our administrators easy and quick access to these data points. So tables are now, enable you to drill down to a spreadsheet, and I mentioned attendance before, same thing as this, and the data is viewed by teacher and on down to the individual student with a couple of clicks. And, you know, the reality is whether you know it or not, we are truly leading the charge in the use of this dashboard on a national level, and we just list a number of our staff members from teaching and learning, human resources, facilities, and Mr. O'Leary is going to share how we leverage this program for actually facility usage. We present on a national level to ed leaders how we use this program. Also want to tie that to how we improve student outcomes and more specifically, our superintendent and district goals. So how do we track reading? Well, our success is pretty impressive to where just back in 2016, we had 11 schools that were As and Bs, and nine that were Ds and Fs, and as you know, last year, 24 schools now As and Bs, no DNF schools. Well, to do that, you got to know where you are throughout the year. So another quick example is what we call the opportunity dashboard. That's where all of our assessment data is shared. And if you remember last month, I shared with you about progress monitoring test two, this is where our administrators can quickly see how we're doing. So as an example, and if you see the red box and the blue and the green, that's a quick list by school where each school is, and it updates every single night as students test. So as a district, when PM1 scores are uploaded, they're automatically in this dashboard, so principals can drill down to PM1 by grade level, by teacher, and they can see what percentage of students are making progress in terms of proficiency and learning gains. It also, this one page shows you results from the progress monitoring two, and at the end of the year, we can quickly see how students do on the final test or the PM3, proficiency as well as learning gains. And of course, again, all this is available by school, grade level and teacher, very quick access to our data. We also want to measure student growth in real time, and this is a really neat tool that before the year is over, we want to see our kids moving on a grade level, in a classroom, at a school, and literally we are able to quantify the average growth of our district in the first part of the year from PM1 to PM2, and then look at each school, which is what I've shown you there, and see, is the point average increase by student matching at that school versus our district average? So as an example, Parkway this year, their students grew, if you see the little blue, and you see the, between the blue and the red, see the 7.94? That means that those students made an average point gain of eight points versus our district average of 4.37. That quantifies to 1.82, and that 1.82 means that those students at that school, at the bottom it says, the 1.82 means that those students are actually growing 82% greater than average in our district.
Craig, may I, may I interject real quick?
Yes, sir.
Because I wanted to say, this, this has been the most powerful thing for our principals and our district leaders, simply because if you take a look at a couple of those schools, those are schools Parkway earned its first day last year, and, and we see that trend, they're literally moving students at twice the rate as the district average. So what this creates is when you can see this, it starts conversations between principals, like what exactly is happening in these classrooms? It creates conversations with our team where we can go out and take a look and see what the teachers are doing, what are the instructional materials that are being utilized, how the instructional materials are being utilized. So it's creating a lot of conversations amongst our principals, and also on the flip side of this, for the, for the, for the grade bands or the schools or the teachers that are not being as effective, it, we can look at, okay, how can we better support these classrooms, these teachers, these schools, so that they can see the same kind of outcomes that we've seen at Parkway over the last few years? So that, this has been, this is new, we just came out with this this year, and it's been a real game changer for us. So I want to commend Dr. Summer and also Mr. O'Leary and those teams that have worked collaboratively with teaching and learning to create this tool, because this is a real game changer for us. Thanks, Craig.
Thank you, sir. So it actually allows you to then drill down, I've selected just Lakewood Park as an example, and their average growth was 13.88 on the reading test from PM1 to PM2, that's how much their students grew. And this is, I'm sorry, this is testing math, and what that translates to, just another example, if you see third grade, fourth grade, fifth grade, this school's able to quickly drill in to see which grade level is moving their students the most at that particular school, and then how does that compare to the district average? And if you see, I have the 1.57 highlighted, which just shows that at that school, that translates to their students are growing 57% higher than the district average. And to Dr. Prince's point, you can then drill down to teacher to see which classrooms are moving students throughout the year and which aren't, so that you can align resources and support. Okay, I'll loop back to that in just a moment, but we also want to talk about how do we increase acceleration? Last month, we reported out as to another goal that we've been able to really be successful with, and I showed you how our enrollment has grown from 2014, 2015, 22%, but how our acceleration has increased by 235% over the last 10 years. Well, Power BI has been invaluable because we have a dashboard, the student scheduling dashboard. So a brief example here, we're able to quickly pull up and see, in each of those bars is a different year, those stacked bars, you see the bars increasing. So just imagine we're able to drill down into a dropdown box by school, by grade level, by student subgroup. We're also able to see how we're scheduling students at each school. Are students, you know, assigned to the right courses? Again, we can see this in real time at multiple points throughout the year. When we, when it comes to acceleration, accelerating students, we're also able to see how many have passed the ACE exams, and if you can just imagine, if I want to see who has and who hasn't, I simply right-click and pull up a table, okay? Just a little painting a couple of pictures. Other pieces we're able to do is take a look at how students are performing in real time with their grades, and I just put a highlight of Ds and Fs, so principals can quickly pull up by class, by course, by grade level, how many students, and who are they? I can also take a look at, what's my average GPA at my school based on which department? Do some departments, do we have more remediation needed in the classroom and what have you? So it's very, very powerful and quick, and it allows me, and this is the key, data is useful and becomes information that I can act upon. Transitioning to the, to the second part of the presentation is how do we then leverage resources? If you remember last month, I shared with you our processes that our executive directors and teaching and learning uses to visit school sites. The key here is for us to empower our principals with this data and enable them to leverage the resources at their site, as well as for us as a district, to make sure that when we need to provide support, we can do so. So what we're able to do is each month, from a chronological standpoint, we leverage Power BI, and I showed you four or five examples. We have about 100 dashboards that we access, and we make a calendar in the beginning of the year to figure out what is it and when, so it's not overwhelming for our schools and our school leaders that we need to monitor. And we send out weekly emails that I put together to make sure that we put the cadence to data at where it needs to be, so that if you're a principal, you know what to look at that week. We also use it for our executive directors, and there's Mrs. Woolard, one of our EDs, you see what she's pointing to, and now that looks familiar. That's a Power BI dashboard that she uses to present out to the superintendent and the cabinet as an executive director as to how her schools are performing, so she knows where to provide additional support. You see Mrs. Broom there, this is Power BI, if you, if you look at this slide that she's presenting to, that is Power BI, where she's able to quickly present to her leadership team where her strong and weak points are, so that she knows her strengths and opportunities for growth at the school site. And if you remember last month, we talked about school performance meetings, this is what is used and when during those meetings. Another example, as we institutionalize the use of this to make it actionable for all of our principals, here's a snapshot of the slide deck that a school used, and this is Dan McCarty, and Principal Stubbs James did an excellent job creating this for her performance review. So just some brief pictures as to what was in her actual slide deck. She's able to quickly pull up her enrollment data from Power BI, that's another tool that we have. She was able to pull up her science and social studies performance, and she wanted to target her English language learners and how they're performing. That data was available to her at her fingertips. Attendance, as we know, Dan McCarty has significant increases in attendance because we know who's out and how to reach out to them. Want to give her a shout out for using that, as well as English language arts, how are students doing when it comes to students with IEPs? So all this is easily able to, you know, because of the beauty of Power BI being a Microsoft tool, it allows principals to use Word, Excel, and this is a PowerPoint that interrelates with Power BI to create useful reports and leverage her team. Others, other uses of Power BI are district-wide, and in a minute, we'll get to some operational pieces, but this is just in a log, and, and, you know, with Denise Rodriguez and her teaching and learning team, this allows us to quantify when we determine as a district which schools need additional support. Power BI is able to show us exactly how many hours district staff is spending at sites providing additional support in classrooms, in CLPs, and growing teachers. And we are able to break that down by category and export that to spreadsheets. So again, I gave you a snapshot of all the academic boards, the opportunity dashboard, which is all of our academic data. We have a new foundational dashboard which tracks our K2 data, attendance, discipline, grades. I showed you student graduation, I kind of touched on in the Dan McCarty presentation, student demographics, so schools can go through and pull all their historical data in terms of their enrollment. Schools can access all of their historical school grade data, how did I perform back in 2023 versus how am I doing now? We have a really neat dashboard on HR analytics and student scheduling. Going to transition a little bit to how we use this for facilities management, and for that, I'll turn to the amazing Terrence O'Leary.
So I just wanted to go back to how Dr. Prince started that. When we had our first data warehouse put together, it was extremely complicated, and he's being very humble, because what you're seeing is no data silo. It's collecting all the data so it can be used throughout the organization, and it was led by the educational side of the house. When we first did our data warehouse, we did that from a technology lens, so we didn't quite know how to get it down to the needs of the principal. So when we got rid of those data silos, and Dr. Prince would come in with the programmers, he would bring them honey buns, we would draw on the board, we will do all those types of things, and it's evolved. Dr. Summer comes in now, he meets with us on our programmer team, the Jim Dons, the Vanessa Bells, and Carmen, that's right, three people build everything you see. Only three, efficiency, it's financial resources, we're able to quickly produce, because you have to be able to change on a dime, and you can't wait for these reports and data to come out from those types of aspects. In addition, on the operational side, we have lots of daily cogs going, and how do you gather all the data for things like what you're looking up here? This is a school due platform, this is how we manage all the tickets on the broke fix in all of our schools, 42 sites, and year-to-date, you can see there's 15,669 work order tickets. In that system, you only can bring one up at a time. The beauty of Power BI is I can export that data overnight and import it into BI and give me a quick lens dashboard, so if a principal calls me and says, hey, I have this issue, or Dr. Prince says, hey, I have this issue, or I can work with my facilities teams, where are they aligned? Who needs some supports? Do we need another carpenter because we have open tickets? You can see today, we're only at about 695 within the week, I know 137 new tickets came onboard, so are we closing those quick enough and evaluating ourselves against it? We can look at by each technician that it's assigned to. I'm only going to show you three today, but this is across the board, whether you're in IT, and how we can look at all the open tickets there, security, IT security, who's logged in, where it does, dashboards for all of it. It allows us not to be in the weeds all the time and looking for paperwork, and boom, I bring it up, I know within three minutes in the morning, hey, we got to allocate more resources to a carpenter to make sure these school sites are fixed, especially where we are with things like, you know, being sure that active shooter, door locks, hinges, we want to make sure those are done right away. So here's a great example of just how we do it. If you look down the left-hand side, those are all the different reports in there, by location, by work status, is it open, closed? By school, how many schools are open? Right now, currently, I know there's all schools, the highest total is less than 30, I think it's 28 at Treasure Coast High. Boom, fingertips, data, I got to get out there, get that fixed, let's schedule it, let's provide supports. In addition, we use it for tracking our burglar alarms and fire alarms. So late at night, you can see that we manage those types of things. Our school day is 8 to 4, 7 to 2:30. Our school day is eight to four, seven to 2:30. But in operations, our day starts at five in the morning, Saturday, seven days a week because a fire alarm could go off on a weekend. This is how we're managing that. Work smarter, not harder. Get quickly, use efficiencies. So I'm not interrupting everybody on the weekend. We have one technician, hey, we had an alarm, did you go in and manage that? So just kind of giving you a flavor of what the dashboards could do. Here's one for food service. How do I track all the free and reduced applications? Deborah does a phenomenal job at who's applied, where are they at in the process? Who do we need to follow up? Again, we have several reports to the left that show you by lunch code, by paid status, by school, by location. So all of that information is relevant. So when we're in our cabinet meetings, we're not looking for answers, we're providing answers. Hey, who do we need to assist in those types of things? So at this time, I'll turn it back over to Dr. Summer.
And we're going to go back to the PYG report. Dr. Prince has something he wants to share.
Yeah, before we take any questions, I asked Craig to go back to this because it's, it's important to understand, I feel like a 70s game show host. Remember, remember those guys that used to carry these around? Yes. So whenever we take a look at this, what this does for us is basically you've got Parkway that's moving students, like if the value of regular average growth is one, then twice of that growth is two. All right? So Parkway is moving students for ELA grades through three through five, almost twice the average. Now, we also know that Parkway earned an A last year for the first time. But second is Fair Lawn. There is a big difference between Parkway and Fair Lawn. Fair Lawn is one of our more affluent schools, socioeconomics. Parkway is one of our less affluent schools, high poverty. But look at C.A. Moore, Lawnwood, Lakewood Park. The bottom line is this takes socioeconomics out of the equation. It's who's moving students? Who's moving students? And that's powerful because we've got examples of more affluent schools like Morningside and Fair Lawn, they're moving students. And we've got some of our higher poverty schools like C.A. Moore, they're moving students. Now clearly, I'm not going to show you schools that are not moving students as fast, but it drives our support for schools. And it also creates conversations with our principals. What are you doing that I'm not doing? And it's creating conversations. Every Monday, our principals have collaborative planning meetings that are virtual where they discuss best practices. And this is driving a lot of our instruct, of the conversations that we're having. It also informs you where you need to spend most of your time. A lot of times previously before, you know, when I was a principal, I would try to make sure I was in every teacher's classroom two or three times a week. That, that's a challenge for a high school principal, I'll tell you that. But it was a walkthrough, you know, a temperature check, I needed them to see me. But this tells me where I need to spend more time. This tells me where I need to, okay, what kind of supports do we need to provide for this teacher to help her with her instruction or help him with his instruction? So this is a real game changer for us. We just deployed this in December with our principals. So, you know, we're, there's only so much traction we can get, but it is driving a lot of what we're doing second semester. But this is going to be a game changer for us moving forward.
And Doc, you know, it's, it's the double meaning. The word growth, this dashboard's measuring growth, but it creates a growth mindset for the principals because, you know, if, if for whatever reason, you know, you're not moving at the level that you feel you need to be, you're below the average, you're able to go and visit schools that are, and you're open, you know, you're open with yourself about if that school can be successful, so can we. So it's the double meaning of the word growth. And it has been a big success. So at that point, thank you, Mr. O'Leary, for sharing some of the operational side. Dr. Prince, we are concluded unless there's questions.
Board members, we're open for questions or comments.
Madam Chair. I just had a couple of questions for my own edification operationally. So the data collection, is, is it collected from mechanisms that they already had in place that you are dumping from? Or is it replacing?
Well, that's Terrence.
Data collection?
Nope, that's a brilliant question. I appreciate that question. Really, it's the platform that we use, right? SchoolDoo is a platform that gathers all the tickets. So they go ahead and input their tickets there, but it doesn't, it does not a great job at quantifying it in one single pane of glass so I can see everything at once, which Power BI allows me to do.
So you're taking it from that?
So we're taking it, we're doing, we have open APIs. Matter of fact, all of the data that you see, whether it's coming from our student information system, which is Skyward, HR system, it doesn't matter where it's coming from, we can take those in the background, that's what we do.
And put it into there.
And we drop it in and we make it available, just like Publix. When you're going down Publix and I want to look at this peanut butter, that peanut butter, we have Publix aisles with data sets that we pull to create the story that Dr. Prince talks about.
And it's a, it's a one-stop shop for our folks. They don't have to go into 10 different platforms. All of those platforms communicate, so we're pulling that information into this. And then we're customizing, we're building it so that my, my vision for everything, and I talk about this all the time, it's got to be intuitive. If, if I need a training for hours on something, then you're wasting my time. I should be able to play with it for five minutes and I'll figure it out.
Because this is user-friendly, but you weren't having to train them on new ways to collect their data. This is just for them to view their data. So, and then your operation, your operation side, like open tickets for maintenance, that they're still using their same regular platform?
Correct.
Because I was wondering the learning curve for them at the, at the school level. So the feedback, have you gotten any? I mean, you've only been employing this since December?
Oh, no, no, this has been since 2017. We first started using it when I was the deputy, but we only, we probably had four of these dashboards. We started with graduation because that was a priority of the previous superintendent, that we were going to move graduation. So it was basically, okay, I got a spreadsheet, how can we? How can we visualize this? And then it was like, okay, can we pull information from Skyward? Can we pull information from the different platforms? And we can. So then we started customizing and building based on what, when, when Mr. O'Leary said I would come in with a picture, he's not lying. I would come in with a picture with our IT people and say, can we create this? Because this is what principals, I, I view everything from a lens of a school leader. What can I use and how best can I use this to make quick decisions to support students? And that's kind of where it came from. But then we started seeing, well, what, you know, when we meet in cabinet, it's like Dr. Sanchez in HR, oh, I want to build this. Our chief financial officer, Michelle Thomas, oh, can we do this? So then it becomes all of our different chiefs have their own kind of things that they're monitoring that, that.
They want to see.
Exactly.
And can all principals access all 42 schools?
Yes, they can.
Oh, very good.
Yes.
So it can be competitive.
Oh, yeah.
Very good.
And our principals are very, very competitive.
Creates a growth mindset.
Yes.
And the piece, though, that I do have to say as a recovering principal, myself, recovering high school principal, anything that we can do for them to save them time so they're not pulling data, to your point, from 10 different places. It's all here for them to pull. And they're not, you know, Excel is great, but, you know, creating charts and graphs in Excel is not easy. This does it for them in a real easy graphical point and click way so they can share. So they're really able to do their core mission of improving teaching and learning as opposed to accessing and pulling data, which could literally take days sometimes. Here, it's at their fingertips.
And to your point, Ms. Aronson, it's really, when, when Dr. Summer talks about a growth mindset, if, if you see somebody doing something more successful than you are, you want to know what they're doing and how they're doing it. It's creating a lot of discussion and conversation where principals are literally going to other schools to walk and see, okay, exactly how is this happening? So it's creating great conversations.
Or you're looking for somebody that is doing it.
Exactly.
Maybe better than you, you can look for advice.
We like to say improving collaboration.
Yeah, very good. Thank you.
Board members?
Actually, I do have a question. Thank you, Madam Chair. So I, that was my number one question that was asked. And in terms of, I know the principal's uses, this is for the principal, this is for administration.
Sure, and district staff, yes.
For the administrators.
Correct.
Okay, so is this in lieu of, I mean, are we, is this going to be what we're using? Are there other programs that we use?
Yeah, so, so we, we give access to principals, assistant principals, district staff and some school leaders. But teachers don't access this, they don't have access to it for a number of reasons, obviously, security. But this has really been something that I think has been organic because of the ease of use. However, of course, there are some other programs that schools still use and they're still able to use as they wish, whether it's Performance Matters, Skyward and some other data pieces. The purpose of this really is to track metrics, success in an easy way as well as produce graphics. So it's not, it's not preclusive of any other programs.
I guess, I guess my, one of my, my concern would be that we don't have too many programs that, that's going to be like not efficient.
Sure.
So if we can go to this one, it does everything rather than, you know, having to go all over the place, you know, that this is in lieu of.
And yeah, so I, I think what you're getting at is we want to save principals' time.
Yes.
And a big part of the process, and he mentioned that I meet with the IT team regularly, is we try to, myself, the executive directors, teaching and learning, all district staff, we really try to listen to what the principals need and want to save them time. So it's, a lot of this, a lot of it is really from their feedback and input and it's a matter of can we create it? So to your point, I, I agree with that.
And the other thing is, I, my other question was, what was Parkway doing? So, yes, because it's, it's really, they, they have achieved quite a lot in a short space of time. So that is something that for us to look at. Okay, then you pretty much answered. And what was the district using before this? Before this, what were we using? The Skyward, it's a combination of different programs?
That'd be the best way to answer, a combo of different programs.
Okay.
And, and what you've done, Dr. Summer, is you've expanded and on this, this BI program that we're able to utilize it more. And it's making, it's a game changer, that's what I'm hearing. Because we've used this BI for years, but now you've been able with your skill and your knowledge to get us to another level with the same program that we've had in our hands, which lets us know how important it is to have people that can do certain things that the rest of us can't do. And as, as each of us do our specialty, how that, that brings us to another level of, of performance. I want to give my kudos out to Parkway because I went and visited Parkway yesterday. And from the time you walk in that school, you know it's an A school. From the time you just walk into it, I mean, I just was mesmerized at the school. Because on the outside, the school is an old school. It's kind of, you know, it's like a, ugh, type thing. But when you walk inside that school, it's a transformation completely of what another school could do.
Yeah.
You know, having and being able to go and, and now have more access to being able to tap in, okay, what is this school doing that caused it to go from this grade level in just a couple of years to an A school? And it be a, a poverty, a school with the majority of the kids from poor families. But from the time I walked into Parkway, as I already said, I was mesmerized. I knew, I, I did not, let me put it this way, you go into that school and you know it's going to be an A school because of just how it's decorated, just the, all of the, the positive reinforcements that's on the walls everywhere you look and it's so, and it's this organization, you see that, you know, just, it's just phenomenal what I witnessed. You go into the classrooms and you see the same thing. It's all the way through, all the teachers, I was asking the principal, does all the teachers' classrooms look like this classroom? Because it was just, and it was, I went from classroom to classroom to see the same type of uniform. And, and then the students, it's just, they're doing several different things that my question was to them, how do other principals get to see this? How do, you know, we need to duplicate this in other schools? And my, the answer was, well, Dr. Mills, we just began to start this new program, this, you know, Ivy Power thing that we're able to really help other principals see what's going on here and, and our reasoning behind why we're so successful. So, Dr. Summers, it starts with you. And we appreciate your skill and your ability. I'm going to give my hand clap right now, again.
I got to say, it's a big team effort. I just want to thank all the great people that I work with.
Of course, well, it starts with you. I didn't say it was all you. It starts with you. All right.
What was that, that mean?
Too important, yeah.
Bart Simpson walks back into the leaves.
Thank you for your work, Dr. Summers, okay.
On that note, thank you.
Okay, we're going to move on now.
All right. So we have a last, very brief, quick presentation from Dr. Wild on just going, going over our kindergarten, it's not K8, but it's kindergarten through eighth grade, open enrollment and also Legacy High will have seats that will be taking advantage of open enrollment. And she's going to go over that very briefly if you have any questions. And the reason we wanted to, to do this is because of our timelines. Most of the time, board members get questions. It's because somebody didn't get into a school that, you know, they wanted to get into or whatever, and she's going to talk a little bit about that process because the month of March is when families start to get notified of their, their schools and what schools they've been assigned to. Okay? Dr. Wild?
That is a very tough act to follow. This is very, very brief. Just take a couple of slides here to share with you the student assignment process because like Dr. Prince said, you do get calls probably about this more than anything. So we just wanted to keep you updated. The enrollment process for students to get assigned for their K8 choices, it's, we have two rounds of applications. The early application round is, is already completed. It was January 1st through January 31st. It's being processed now and notifications are going out the week of March 3rd. And then there's a second round because sometimes people don't take action during that first round, so we open it up one more time. And that is March 1st through March 31st, and they will be notified by no later than April 18th. The magnet school enrollment process, and actually this one, it should say K through 12 because the magnet school enrollment process is what kicks off the whole enrollment season. And that is already completed for round one and round two notifications are going out right now. Controlled open enrollment is, is a little bit different and not very utilized in St. Lucie County because we have choice across the district. But we still open up open enrollment. That will be open for the entire month of March. And the lottery, it's a lottery process that is run after that is over based on how many seats in that particular school are open. Notification for that will go out April 30th. And for anyone interested, that is where seats, any available seats for Legacy will be opened up. Controlled open enrollment is open to students that do not live in the zone and even students that live outside of the county can apply for controlled open enrollment based on capacity. For, for open, for any kind of enrollment, just countywide, students at existing schools do not have to do anything when they're at a school and they're just moving up to another grade level. It's only when you're transitioning school types. So if you're in a pure elementary school and you're going into sixth grade, or you're going into ninth grade, or you're new to the district, then you would need to apply for your school of choice. So that transition grade or new to the district only. Parents can apply online through the student assignment website, or they can come into the office. And we really do get a balance of both, people doing it completely online and people that walk into this front office. This is for parents to know, when you do come to enroll your child, there is some documentation that you have to bring with you, and it's very well outlined on our website. But you do need to bring your birth certificate, that is for age verification purposes only. And then if you have a social security card, if there is a custody agreement, you need to bring that along with you, the name and address of the school you last attended. If you're a student with an individual education plan, an ESE student, should bring a copy of that plan if you have one. And your proof of. of that plan if you have one, and your proof of address is probably the key, key documentation, because school assignments are based on zone and school choice is based on zone. All of that information is very clearly outlined on the website. And then, just a note here, we do plan a projected principal hiring date for Western Grove, K8, of May of 2025, because we are, it's coming upon us quickly when we will be opening that new school. So that is all I have for this topic, and I am the last presenter of the day. Are there any questions?
I have a few about Legacy. So March 1st through 31st, you're just going to collect a bunch of names, and then eventually we're going to pull out of a hat the kids that can go there.
Oversimplified, but yes. We don't use a hat, but we have a lottery system, and it's very similar.
Of course, I'm sure, yeah.
Yes, I understand your question, and that is correct.
Then they're going to be notified by April 30th?
Correct.
Are we going to have a second drawing then, once we find out if those kids are going to accept those seats?
At that point, yes. I mean, are we going to keep offering seats to anybody that applied that didn't get in? Yes, we will continue to do that. If there is still people interested, we don't usually have that issue, but with Legacy being a new school, we may, so yes, we will continue to monitor that and, and move.
Then will it be more lottery numbers, or then will it be, you have to sign back up again?
No, you wouldn't have to sign up again. Everything we can to make it easier for the parent, we're not going to make them duplicate their efforts.
Okay. Oh, here's a bad question, and I'm going to regret saying this one. Are we going to take taxpayers first? Is it going to be, is there, are we going to, yeah, basically, are we going to take taxpayers first?
So with controlled open enrollment, like I said, it's not been a big draw in, in our schools in the past. I don't think we're going to have an issue with that, to be honest, and, and I should say that we are still having people sign up that are living in the zone, and so that is why our number of seats will be determined when we get closer. The road is not open yet, so people haven't seen the school, and so that is something that we're working with facilities, because as soon as it's open, we expect an increase. So we will, we will start to see that surge before we give any out-of-zone seats to out-of-zone or out-of-county students. So that, that's actually a very good question. We are currently accepting applications every single day from students that live in that zone, but they currently attend private school or charter schools.
We've had quite a number of charter families register.
All right. Dr. Prince, do you have anything else you want to say before adjourned?
Yeah, just one quick request, beginning and just from an operational standpoint, in April and May, we, we kind of discontinue all of our meetings, we push all of our support out into the schools, we don't have our principal meet, meetings, or APs, or anything like that. We normally do not have a workshop in May, because that coincides with graduation, and I'm going to propose, unless the board has content they want to bring to an April workshop, I'd like to not have a workshop in April, so that we can focus on getting our students ready, because that is literally the week coming up on testing for our students.
Board members, are we good with that? Okay. We're good with that, Dr. Prince. Oh, thank you all. I know I, I pointed out Dr. Summers, but I'm pointing every last one of our administrative team, because as Dr. Summers said, we all realize as a board, it takes all of us and our different skill sets to do and accomplish what we accomplish as a St. Lucie School District. So thank you all in your different departments, and what you do is tremendous in all of our sight as a board. Meeting adjourned.